Mr. Dixon.
Present.
Mr. Rollins. Mr. Scirvano. Mrs. McCulloch. Mr. Segal. Mr. Connor. Mr. Escobedo. With seven present, we have a quorum.
I'd like to thank Rod Waddell and Connor Childers, who are here working behind the scenes to produce our broadcasts of tonight's board meeting on Channel 20 on Comcast. So, thank you, gentlemen. I now have the honor of reading a proclamation for a trauma-informed community. In recognition of becoming a trauma-informed community, as the Trauma-Informed Work Group upholds the following core values: awareness of historical trauma, caring, collaboration, diversity, elimination of stigma, health equity, healing, healthy relationships, holism, hope, and long-term commitment. Whereas addressing the trauma and its impact in the community requires a commitment to the core values and shared values of the indicators. Whereas the T I W using S A M H S A's principles is working to educate the community on the impact of trauma on social interaction and help develop interventions that will allow the full integration of this knowledge into policies, procedures, and practices. For it be resolved that on the seventh day, no, the seventh day of March is when this was signed, 2019, that the Rockford Public School District 205 is committed to working with the T I W in order to become a trauma-informed community. Thank you. We'll now recognize and celebrate outstanding contributions of our students and staff. So, Mr. Earl Dotson Jr., you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, board members. We are always, always happy when students and parents and educators are with us. And tonight, we have a room full of state champions. So, let's get to it. So, we have the opportunity to celebrate students who have represented Rockford Public Schools at the state-level competition. First up, we have I H S A chess. Auburn and Guilford High Schools each had teams qualify for the I H S A State Chess Tournament. After a strong showing at the Palatine Sectional in February, Auburn and Guilford both have young teams. There's only one senior in the group. So, we're looking forward to continued success from both Auburn and Guilford chess players. Congratulations. Are those chess players in the house with us? Yes, they are. Come on up. Next up, we have I H S A cheer. And I don't believe they're in the house this evening, but we are certainly going to recognize them anyway. The Guilford High Schools cheer team took fifth at sectionals in the large-team division, which qualified them to compete in the I H S A State Competitive Cheerleading Finals. The team also placed fifth in the Illinois Cheerleading Coaches Association Championship in the Large Varsity Division. Congratulations to the I H S A winners, the Guilford High School cheer team. All right. Next up, we have bowling. The Auburn High School Boys Bowling Team took fifth place at the sectionals, leading them to the I H S A State Boys Bowling Tournament in January. Jefferson High School senior Landon Cowell qualified for the tournament in individual play. The Knights finished 10th in state with a total pinfall of 12,090. In individual play, Auburn senior Matt Segal finished 11th in state with an average of 219.1. Matt plans to continue his bowling career at Rock Valley College. Congratulations to our boys' bowling state champions. Come on up. Man, what's up with these microphones? Who's responsible for this? I H S A Girls Bowling. In girls' bowling, RPS 205 had three athletes qualify for the I H S A State Girls Bowling Tournament. Guilford High Schools Carrie Minier took second at sectionals. East High Schools Teagan Peterson took fourth. And Auburn High Schools Kaitlyn Bannister took sixth at sectionals to compete in the state tournament in February. At the state tournament, Auburn sophomore Kaitlyn Bannister finished third, the highest finish ever for the Knights girls' team, with an average pinfall of 211. And Kaitlyn is only a sophomore. So, congratulations to the girls' bowling team. Give them a round of applause. All right. Next up, I H S A speech. Auburn High School senior David Day Agai took first place in oratorical declamation at the I H S A Regional and Sectional to advance to represent the Knights at the I H S A Speech State Finals in February. Day ultimately took fourth in the state tournament for speech, drama, and individual events with "Why Must Artists Be Poor?" Congratulations, David, and also to his coach, Julie Clark. Congratulations, David. Congratulations, Mr. Day. All right. Swimming and diving. Guilford High Schools Treighton Hawong qualified for the I H S A State Swimming and Diving Finals and competed in the 100-yard breaststroke. Congratulations to Treighton. He's here this evening. Where you at, Treighton? We have I H S A wrestling. Auburn and East High Schools were each represented at the I H S A State Wrestling Tournament. Lance Morgan represented the Knights, and Saad Hatu and Aiden Guttridge represented the Arabs. And East senior Aiden Guttridge is the I H S A Class 3A Wrestling Heavyweight Champion with the nickname "The Beast of the East." You will see why he's named that when he comes up here. Aiden told the Register Star after his win, "This is the best feeling in the world. It took blood, sweat, and tears, literally, but I got it. I got my title." This marks East High School's first state title since 1999, and its fourth overall. Congratulations to Aiden as he continues his wrestling career at the University of Wisconsin. All right. Come on up, guys. And certainly, we would be remiss if we didn't certainly recognize this. Give a round of applause for all of the parents and other relatives who support our students. And a big shout-out to all those other educators, coaches, and teachers and principals who support our students on a daily basis. Let's give them also a round of applause. Thank you, sir. That is all.
Thank you all for being here. We will now move on to the petitions and communications portion of our meeting, where we invite the public to make comments. The First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees the rights of citizens to petition their government, as well as provides for freedom of speech. Also, the Illinois School Code requires that there be a time at regular and special meetings for public comment. Thus, we are following those mandates during this petitions and communication portion of our agenda. According to board policy 2.230, the public comments portion of the meeting is limited to a total of 30 minutes. The boards will not respond to comments at this time. If it is appropriate, you'll be contacted in a timely manner by staff in response to your questions. My mic doesn't go off. Okay. Not appropriate to address individual board members or individual administrators or discuss matters that would otherwise be confidential in such open meetings. And we only have one person, but there is a clock on the wall to help you with your time for the two minutes. So, thank you for your interest and cooperation on our guidelines. And our one speaker tonight is Kaweah Jackson.
Okay. Hi, my name is Kaweah Jackson, and I'm from Lincoln Middle School. And I wanted to start off my two minutes with a history lesson. So, a long time ago, before I was born, a representative of the Rockford Public Schools stated, "The Rockford Public Schools have been desegregated. No longer are there any schools that are white-only or minority-only or approximations to such schools." After this statement was made, the Rockford Public Schools were desegregated. Now, 20 years later, we are back to the same place we started. I'm not here today to prove that segregation is happening in our district because that's already been proven. I'm here today to say to do better. Don't pretend like a system that is clearly broken is mended. No matter how many times you update the zones, they will always segregate and separate us as a community. This is a topic we no longer choose to speak of, but that's about to change. I will no longer allow this injustice to be ignored, and I will continue to fight for an equal education. What many people fail to realize is this reoccurring issue is not a matter of race. The zones do not ethnically segregate us because everyone in this room can live wherever they choose as long as they have the money. And just like that, our real, deep-rooted problem is revealed. The zones do not racially segregate us, but they do economically. Instead of treating us like cattle and shoving us into one school without a choice, the district should implement a three-choice system. With this system, every parent has a choice for their child to attend one of the three closest schools to their home. This would be on a first-come, first-served basis. This is something that I made up. This system is only one of many that could desegregate and better our district. As Martin Luther King Jr. once said, "I have the audacity to believe that people everywhere can have three meals a day for their bodies and education and culture for their minds." Isn't that the very foundation of our country, a fair and equal education? Isn't it time that we embrace the American culture and live the dream? Thank you.
Thank you, Kaweah. Thank you very much for being here. Board member comments? Any board member comments at this time? Connor.
Today is Tuesday, and if I recall, there's a basketball game going on. So, I would say to the Rockford East team, I think they've started, or they're... It's at 7:30. Congratulations, no matter what the outcome. Fabulous year. What a great team. What I hear is they're just fabulous kids. So, we're really very proud of them. And as an East alum, I would say, "Go Arabs."
All right. Mr. Segal.
My comments are actually more as a parent than as a board member. I have to express my gratitude to 205 for the ways they've accommodated my family. And I'm speaking specifically, I guess, tonight about the opportunity for my son to bowl and to compete from middle school through high school and see an environment of sportsmanship that is unique and, I think, fairly special. It created an opportunity for him to do something that was just a little bit different athletically. And I'm just really grateful for all the people who contributed, from athletic directors and coaches and parents and superintendents and boards and administrators and principals who all made that possible. I'm just enormously grateful.
Mr. Dixon.
Last week, I had the opportunity to go hear the concert last week with the Arts and Musical Department. I really want to thank them for doing a citywide musical because it was wonderful, and I really enjoyed it. I think that it gives the opportunity for 205 to showcase their talents. And we really have some really talented young youth that have the opportunities to broadcast it. And so, I just want to thank District 205 for that.
On my list of things to say. So, I got to do three fun things this week. First of all, I did get to go to Roosevelt and Eisenhower. Dr. Jarrett, Matt Zennaker, and they're for the teachers from our school district that won the Golden Apple Awards. Congratulations to them. And it was just, it is so great to see their face when you walk in that classroom to find, and they figure out that they're there because they won, you know? Or they're just in shock, and they're so gracious. It's just so fun. And I too got to go to the Fine Arts Band and Orchestra Concert for Middle School, and it was high school, secondary school. So, it was wonderful. I'm amazed at how talented they are and how cool it is that we have such a strong director of our Fine Arts program that, you know, encourages conductors to come from colleges in the region to guest-conduct these things. It's amazing. And the Mariachi Band knocked it out of the park. So, congratulations to them. I also got to go to the Middle School Swim Meet City Competition this year, too. So, I had a busy week. So, wonderful, wonderful stuff. So, thank you all for everyone that helps out with those programs. Any other board member comments? We'll move on then to the consent portion of our agenda, including these consent items: payroll, accounts payable, purchase orders, contracts under 10,000, construction bid request logs, and travel. Paying bid recommendations for financial and compliance audit services, the McIntosh School re-roofing and mechanical upgrades, the demolition of Nelson, King, Dennis, and New Milford Schools, recurring contracts for the Y S N addendum, the TSA Consulting Group, the Nusella for Conklin Elementary, and the fiscal year 2020 amended student fees and the Freedom of Information Log. Is there a motion and a second to approve these consent items?
Moved.
Mr. Connor?
Second.
By Mr. Segal. Are there any items from the consent list that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Mr. Segal.
10A.
10A, okay. Others. I'll ask the coordinator and then call the roll on the consent items not pulled.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mr. Rollins. Mr. Scirvano.
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch.
Yes.
Mr. Segal.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all. Now, I'll take a motion and a second for the Y S N addendum, which is 10A.
Moved.
Connor moves.
Second.
By Mr. Segal. Questions or discussion? Mr. Segal.
Just curious. How many students does the district anticipate being served by the advocate being proposed?
Good evening. Currently, when we look at our numbers, we've served over 310 students through the J D C program for the past two years. And yes, we serve a lot in this district. So, that individual will be actually probably, on the average, about 150 students a year.
Other questions? Mrs. McCulloch.
So, this person will be doing more than working with just the students that are at J D C, correct?
This person will be working with any student that is engaged with any type of court systems, including juvenile detention center, helping those students transition back to their current, you know, high schools and as well as those students who are coming from Department of Corrections.
Well, one of the questions I asked, one of the answers I received back was that they'll be working with the youth courts in our high schools?
Well, what we're basically saying is that there has been a proposal on the floor for us to be reviewing an individual or a staff member to work with youth court systems. If we continue to believe that that is warranted, we will actually have this person working with those students as well because the whole goal is to ensure that our students, in terms of youth court, do not engage, you know, in criminal activity that will cause them to end up in the court systems. So, this person will be assisting in that endeavor as well.
So, we're going to have youth court? We have youth court, or we don't have it?
We do have youth court.
We still have it?
We do have youth court, yes.
And what will this person do that's not being done now?
That person will be coordinating services with the person that is actually hired by the county and the other individuals that are actually, you know, paying for that particular position. They will be assisting them. So, if our students were to engage in a criminal activity and the discussion regarding youth court was presented to that individual, this person would also be coordinating those services with the current youth court.
But they won't be running the youth court. The county will continue in their role that they have right now
Exactly.
with youth court, correct?
Yes.
And that's the restorative justice piece at the high schools. So...
That is correct.
And what grant is this part of?
This is part of a juvenile delinquent grant, Title I, Part D.
And so, is this the same grant that we've covered Y S N for the past five years or four years, however long we've had a contract?
No. No, this is a grant that was submitted to Rockford Public Schools based upon the number of students we have been serving in juvenile detention center. It was actually granted to us the first year without us having to write R F P.
So, is this our first year of this grant, then?
No, we've been receiving this grant since 2015 was the first year, Alex. And it has grown since then because we've been serving so many children in Department of Corrections.
So, we've had it 19, four years. Why have we not had this position prior to this, then?
Because the grant started at a very small amount. The first year was 10,000. The next year was 23,000, and so forth. And as the state, as well as the federal government, has started to get involved with juvenile restorative practices, they've determined that Rockford Public Schools services was in need of additional funding. And so, this past year, we were awarded additional funds, and we were also able to write for a transition specialist, which is what the U.S. Department of Education suggested or recommended that all districts, you know, do. But without us having, you know, the funding at the time, we could not do that. So, they have provided funding specifically for this position.
So, it's something that you wrote for, for this position? And is it only, is this a year-to-year grant?
It is a year-to-year grant, and I can't say that I wrote for it. I would like to commend those services to Alex Barrington and Amy Sapinski in the grad department.
And so, to continue with this position next year would require us to write for it again?
We write for the grant every year. It is an R F P every year. That's correct.
And the kind of person who would have this position is a social worker, a teacher, or what?
The job description was provided in the executive summary.
Would you just say it out loud?
Say what out loud? What I wrote in the executive summary?
What, no. Just what the educational requirement or background of a candidate for this position would be.
Bachelor's or master's degree in social work, counseling, criminal justice, education, or human services. Other degrees may be considered depending on relevance to the position.
And they, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Thank you.
Questions? I'll then call the roll on the approval of Item 10A, the Y S N addendum.
Mr. Rollins. Mr. Scirvano.
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch.
Yes.
Mr. Segal.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
We are now on to the closed-session consent agenda items, including the reduction in F D E for the Chief Continuous Improvement Officer, amendment of Jim Parker as a 12-month high school principal at East High School, the appointment of Kirsten Garrigan as a 12-month principal at Lincoln Middle School, appointment of Travida Redman as a 12-month principal at Kennedy Middle School. Item E has been pulled, and Items F and G weren't supposed to even be on there. So, cross those off. It's only on mine. Okay. So, you're making it difficult for me. No, okay.
Well, I'm honored.
And the H R organizational report, so. There you go. And then, unless otherwise notified below, the board adopts and accepts the hearing officer's findings and recommendations in the following cases in which students expelled or suspended are prohibited from being on school grounds and school-sponsored activities without the prior written permission of the principal. Student 4257 is expelled for the remainder of this school year and through the first semester of next school year, 20th school year. Student 4258 and 4259 are expelled for the remainder of this school year and all of the next school year. Student 4261 is an expulsion being held in abeyance contingent upon an E I A agreement for the remainder of this school year and all of next year. And the three-day suspension is affirmed for student 5009. And the following students have received E I As: Students 1042, 1043, 1044, 3769, 3770, 3771, 3772, 3773, 774, 3775, 3776, 3777. Student 3778, 3779, 3780, 3781, 782, 3783, 3784, 3785, 3786, 3787, 3788, 3789, 3790, 3791, 3792, 3793, 3796, 3797, and student 3798. Is there a motion and a second to approve these closed-session consent items?
Moved.
Connor?
Second.
By Mr. Segal. Are there any items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Mr. Rollins.
13 and 14.
13 and 14. I'll call the roll on the approval of the items not pulled.
Mr. Scirvano.
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch.
Yes.
Mr. Segal.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mr. Rollins. The motion passes unanimously.
Take a motion to approve both Items 13 and 14, Take a motion to approve both Items 13 and 14, which are the student disciplines?
I'm moved. Second.
Second by Mr. Dixon. Any discussion? Do that anyway. I have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the student discipline items 13 and 14.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Abstain.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
The motion passes as six yeses and one abstain.
Our next agenda item is the superintendent's report. Dr. Jarrett.
Thank you, Mr. Scavano. And boy, you, the board comments really stole a lot of my thunder. The golden apple was wonderful. So excited to see so many wonderful recognitions for students, a state champion in wrestling, an all-stater in bowling, a state champion in speech. We could go on and on and on. So many awesome things that our students are accomplishing, and we're proud of each and every one of them that we recognize today at the team and at the individual level, and proud of our teachers with that individual recognition as well. So it was a wonderful thing. I did want, we did miss one item in all the comprehensive areas, and that was we had an outstanding fine arts Hall of Fame event. Dr. Vosberg and I had a chance to attend the social hour beforehand, and we had about 150 people, and we recognized a team, in this case, it was a production from 2004, the production of Oliver. And I think there were four individuals that were recognized as well. So in addition to all of the great student productions from current students that we had this week for Fine Arts Week, we also got to recognize some greats from our past. So proud of our present students for their accomplishments tonight, all the fine arts events, our teachers, but also it was really great to get in touch with our traditions. And it's the third year that we've recognized Hall of Famers in the fine arts. We are, I believe, in our seventh year for recognizing athletic Hall of Fame, and I think those are two traditions we should be proud of. And I suspect that some of the students that we're recognizing right now, we may be recognizing again someday as part of that Hall of Fame process. So thank you.
Okay, our next item is the action items, which we have won. That is the pathway sponsorship for Academy Pathways that was presented by Mrs. French. Is there a motion in a second to approve Item 16A?
I'm moved.
Mr. Connor?
Second.
By Mr. Segal. Any questions or discussion? And on the coordinator then call on the, call the roll on the approval of pathway sponsorships.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
We will move on to new business, and Mrs. Yar has the first presentation on the resolution to adopt the 1819 amended budget.
I gave a formal presentation during the superintendent's update in the last board meeting, so I won't be actually presenting, but I'll welcome any questions at this time. I did attach the presentation from the last board meeting that we, Michelle Seder, gave two weeks ago.
Mrs. Yar? This will be presented at our March 21st board meeting for a vote.
Yeah, it'll actually come back, it'll be approved on April 9th, because we have the 30-day public hearing.
Okay, all right, okay. Our second item, Mrs. French, I'm pleased to tell you, you are not last. Okay? Okay. On Incubator EDU or something, yeah.
Good evening. My name's Bridgette French. I'm the executive director of college and career readiness, here to present to this evening, Incubator EDU. The problem we are trying to solve tonight is that we have not had a viable three-course sequence in our business pathway. And as a result, we've seen a market decline in student interest in that pathway. We have seen our students enrolling in Intro to Business and Tech, and then from there, some of them enroll in Virtual Enterprise. Auburn and East offer Virtual Enterprise. The students at Guilford, or Jefferson, or Roosevelt would go into Advanced Computer Concepts. And then from there, some students will go into accounting. And then from there, students would go into oftentimes another pathway course, oftentimes another pathway course that isn't even in their academy. We have looked at continuing the status quo, and the problem with that is that we don't see a connection to post-secondary, and we would see a continuing decline in enrollment in that pathway course sequence. We've looked at implementing Virtual Enterprise at all of our schools, and then Virtual Enterprise II as a third course in that sequence. But we actually did pilot Virtual Enterprise II at Auburn and East, and we saw that the curriculum of VEI II, it's Virtual Enterprise International, was very, very repetitive to Virtual Enterprise I, and so students weren't really interested in taking that second course. The other option is to find another business class to implement in this pathway, but we haven't found one to date that we feel will be as engaging as we believe Incubator will be. So the solution is to launch Incubator EDU at our four traditional high schools. Incubator is an authentic entrepreneurship experience for our students, where they get to build a real business with seed funding from local community members to develop a concept, a product, or solve a problem in our community. The pathway then would be Intro to Business and Tech Concepts, followed by Virtual Enterprise, followed by Incubator. And the reason why this works so well is because Virtual Enterprise is a class where every student in the class has a role in the business. So one student is a CEO, one student is the director of marketing, they're working with a virtual product and virtual dollars. It's a really nice transition into Incubator, where they have the opportunity to develop a real business with real dollars. This course also has a large community involvement component. The curriculum involves entrepreneurs, so in each unit of the curriculum, there's one opportunity for the community members to get involved and actually teach that unit. The advisory board, or the community members that want to be a part of this class, would provide seed funding for the students to develop their concept. And then those investors come back at the end of the year for a Shark Tank-type event, where the students pitch their product or their idea, and the businessmen or women have the opportunity to choose to invest or not invest in those student concepts. We've already talked to the City of Rockford's Community Development Team, which works to build entrepreneurs in our community, Iger Lab, and Anderson Enterprises, which have all shown interest or committed to providing seed funding for students should this get board approval. The total cost is $70,000. There's a one-time licensing fee of $50,000, 20 for the first school, 10 for each additional school. And then there's an annual license fee of $5,000 per school, so that's $20,000 for a total of $70,000. The cost provides a robust curriculum for teachers and our business partners, curriculum maps aligned to Common Core standards, and include soft skills or 21st century skills, such as communication, critical thinking, collaboration, and creativity. The cost also includes summer PD for teachers, ongoing support for teachers, teacher leadership coaches, and teacher recognition programs for our teachers. We'll assess the situation by looking at student success. So student success isn't necessarily based on whether or not they can come up with a viable product, but it's really how they progress through the process. We'll look at community engagement throughout the process, and then does this help increase our pathway enrollment and pathway completion? We really see that there is a risk to not doing this, and that we will continue to see attrition in our business pathway. And we think that this is a great opportunity to develop our young entrepreneurs. We'll report back monthly at our high school principals' meeting, and then we'll also invite you to the Shark Tank event at the end of the next school year, should this get board approval, and then report back annually to you as the board. Happy to answer any questions you might have at this time?
I guess for the $70,000, that is our cost? Or is that the seed money that the investors would have to put into it?
The $70,000 is our cost. That covers the curriculum, the PD for teachers, and then the seed money is relatively small for students. It's typically, you know, around $1,000 per student, which, you know, compared to 70 is small, but for students, it's quite a bit of money.
And I guess the next question would be, have, what do we, I guess, kind of where do we find this type of program? Were we following somebody else's path? And has it been successful? Have we seen an increase in jobs, or connecting them to higher education?
So we first actually looked at this as a district three or four years ago. It's working well in the suburbs. But since then, Hananega has launched Incubator EDU, and our team has gone up there and worked with their team, have been very generous with their time in sharing resources and successes. And I think that there have been some small wins of students who have created some pretty cool products, but I think the overall benefit is really the way it gets kids thinking about what they're able to do and what they're able to give back to their own community.
And we'd be using this in the all-purpose room. Like at Auburn, they had an all-purpose room where you could brainstorm.
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly. So we have one of those classrooms now at all of our schools, all of our high schools, and so that's where the Incubator class will take place.
Mr. Connor, I think you were next.
In terms of the ideas, I'm glad you said that about the ideas. Is part of the job of the advisory board that if students want to do this, but they really don't have an original idea, that they have kind of structure and advice that they can get on...
Yes.
Kind of product or service that...
Yes.
Can essentially do. And I guess, so that's one part. And then the second is, the Incubator EDU, does it do basics for them, you know, Excel spreadsheets that support them, or some kind of materials that they would need to put together a business plan and...
Well, our students actually learn those skills in the Intro to Business and Tech Concepts class. The Microsoft Office certification is one that we offer to all of our Intro to Business students. So they will already have those skills coming into this class.
It wasn't the skills, it was like the framework, so they'd have things ready for them to use.
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah, okay.
So...
There's materials.
Yes, there are extensive materials, both online and in traditional, like curriculum mapping forms, that are very robust and very engaging. I mean, we spent...
Like for marketing, the various functions, there are specific things that help...
Yes.
The students who want to learn those parts.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Segal? Can you tell me what the duration of the PD is for the program?
So over the summer, there will be three days, three full days of training, and then there will be ongoing training throughout the year that will be virtual.
So three days at each of the high schools?
So actually, the teachers that are identified will go to an Incubator conference, where they will be onboarded for three full days, and then there will be virtual PD opportunities available for them throughout the year.
Thank you.
We could get Camera Craft to donate some time. Mr. McCullough, Mrs. McCullough.
So when I look at the total cost, the $70,000, I don't see the word seed fee, or per student fee, or whatever you just spoke to. What is that?
So local community members will provide students, like, seed funding to help them kind of get their project launched and off the ground.
Okay. Do the students have to go find somebody to support them?
No, we provide, yeah, we provide them businessmen and women who are willing to provide that funding. And we've already kind of started the groundwork with that, to find men and women who are willing to do that.
And the annual license fee means this will end up coming back to us under recurring costs and...
Correct. So it will be $20,000 each additional year.
And you'll be able to bring metrics with that, so that we can see where it's...
Absolutely.
And speaking of that... Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
I know, when that cheer team was here last week, I was like, well, why aren't they doing a cheer?
I know.
We used to have, people who do, yeah, musical, we used, it used to be kind of fun, actually, a little bit of entertainment, but it made the meeting long, I know. Y'all want to get home. My question is, you know, more in a broad category of the academies. We've had them for how many years now, wall-to-wall, district-wide?
2012, 13 was our first wall-to-wall year.
Okay. So is there a report that you or your department or whatever will be bringing forward to show us how we have found the academies to be successful in the ways that they were presented to us when, and this isn't, you know, specific to this, this is kind of overarching. You know, we were told that it would increase our graduation rate, it would increase this, you know, we could go back and pull up all the things that it was going to do for us. And having gone this far out, I don't remember seeing a report that is current, that is demonstrating to us. So if that's on our docket, please tell me. But demonstrating to us why we want to continue with academies in general, better yet, especially, you know, we have kids falling off in the business one, because they're not finding it's worthwhile that you guys are engaging.
And so when Mrs. French presented some of our, we presented a number of updates that acknowledged that we aren't getting all of the results that we want yet, and made significant tweaks. One of them, you just passed tonight, which is the pathway sponsorship model, to make sure we get deeper community support. A few months back, we passed the master scheduling component, where we provided scheduling incentives and also some expertise in scheduling. So I think to say that, we can certainly present all of those metrics, and we do present all those metrics on an annual basis, not necessarily in the context of tying it to academies. But I think part of what we've acknowledged with multiple things that Mrs. French has brought forward now that she is in this role, is a significant need to make sure we are fundamentally actually doing academies correctly. So I think at this point, it would be difficult to, if you don't do something with fidelity, that becomes problematic. So we can certainly provide whatever metrics we want in terms of CTE switch to SAT, we can look at graduation rate, freshman-on-track rate, and I think you'll see very uneven results on those metrics. I think what you do see is an acknowledgement on the part of Bridget and her team that we needed to really dramatically make some changes this year in order to ensure fidelity was occurring. So we'll be happy to own whatever limited results we've had so far, but I think we're also, with multiple presentations, have acknowledged how much improvement needs to occur.
And thank you for reminding me of all the things that we are doing. Are there any other, are there any other pieces that you're finding that you're going to need to bring to us to help spur?
I mean, we've done a lot of work over the last year and a half. The work-based learning piece of it with alignment Rockford is a component. I mean, if you think about the three components of academies, teaching and learning is our next big focus, and we're doing a lot of summer PD around, how do you integrate content both ways? So how do you take your pathways content and put that into your English, math, social studies, science courses? And how do you embed the core content concepts into your pathways courses? That's kind of the final step we really need to get to, to make academies real. As Dr. Jarrett said, the scheduling piece was critical, the work-based learning piece was critical, and then pairing down our pathways and getting these three-course sequences in place was absolutely critical. And then Reed Jutris, who's the director of CTE, or Career and Technical Education, has been doing extensive work with our pathways curriculum throughout the year as well, to make sure that we have uniform standards across the district, that we have the supplies that we need for those courses through our federal Perkins dollars. So a lot of groundwork has been in place, but I think it's also important to note that there's no one, like, academies metric, that if we do academies well, and we do it with fidelity, then, you know, as a whole, we will improve. And there are multiple moving pieces to that.
Which is what we were, you know, led to believe, that all these metrics would improve when we brought academies in, and so acknowledging that it hasn't happened and that we need to make changes. But the one that really strikes me that you just mentioned was that the last piece is embedding the academy into the core, and the core into the academy, and I guess I would have thought that would be like ground-level work, because that's what was sold to us as really the import of doing this model. So the fact that it hasn't been done and with as much fidelity as we would like, was that left to teachers? Is that, instead of a district, you know, wide...
I think we did some, we did a lot of good groundwork. We did a lot of training and project-based learning, but it wasn't really until the past couple of years, we started training people to be trainers. And with attrition and turnover, the people that were trained, you know, moved or left. And so we, you know, we also haven't done a good job of saying, like, here is a unit that you can use to put into your classroom that is easy to digest for both you and your students. We've created a lot of really awesome, huge interdisciplinary units, where we've done a big mock epidemic that every teacher and every student in the building gets involved in, and they understand how their academy plays a part in that. But what we haven't done well is, if you're an English teacher in the Health Sciences Academy, how can you teach English with a health sciences flair? And that's what we haven't really done a great job of, of providing resources for our teachers to be able to allow them to do.
Escobedo, I think you had your light on earlier.
Yeah, quick question, because I think this applies to a lot of the academy work. And I understand a lot of this is subjective, and some of, you know, so I'm not questioning it, but, and a lot of the benefits we may not even realize until our students leave the academy. But you talked about measuring student success, and how there's going to be more as they progress. Can you elaborate on how you're going to measure student success? Yes, specifically, yeah.
You need to turn your mic off.
I don't, it keeps turning off. So my point was that students won't be graded on whether or not they come up with a product that is bought and sold, because we know that that's not realistic. The students will be graded on whether or not they are able to understand, digest, and demonstrate that they've understood the essential learning outcomes of the course.
Okay, yeah, I guess I was thinking more of like, from the program perspective, seeing if we were able to go back and say, yeah, this was a success, because this...
Increase the number of students in the pathway.
Or because we were able to see a number of students, you know, reach whatever, I don't know, business objectives from, or reach their business goals from, defined from start to finish, and...
So the business goals are embedded in this curriculum. It is a really fantastic curriculum, and I'm more than happy to share it with you and the board. And I think that, yes, the essential learning outcomes are embedded in, really, what is it like to come up with an idea and take that idea into implementation?
Yeah. Okay. This is a follow-up on something you said. And this is really, I assume, a little bit of a side venture from your basic point here, but you had mentioned that the actual, the BAMIT part, is that what you were saying? That the actual participation was down in BAMIT specifically?
So our business pathway in particular, so our academy is BAMIT, Business Arts, Modern Word Language, IT. The business pathway in particular has had declining enrollment, because it's been sort of this hodgepodge of classes. I mean, they, you know, accounting in particular has not been particularly engaging to our students, so...
What?
Sorry, no offense.
Come on, Miss, yeah, yeah, say it, then.
So students really, you know, we've seen a lot of attrition over the past few years.
Is it just, my point was going to be, is it just business that this has been true of?
It has been primarily business, yes.
Really? Across all four academies?
Mm-hmm, yes.
I don't want to take this time tonight, but I'd be very interested in some of the factors behind that. Very interesting to me, I mean, my one comment is, what is astounding about that is, the vast majority of people are in business sometimes.
Right, right.
So it's kind of like, I mean, I think one of the things I'm going to comment on is, and, you know, don't take this wrong, all you educators out there, but, I mean, really, how much are people steering students towards what is, you know, from my point of view, a natural path? You know, I guess, that, I'm having a hard time with this one, so I would like to follow up, you know, and don't want to take too much time tonight, but I'm glad to see the entrepreneurial thing, but what I will say is, especially if you do research, and I've sent Dr. Jarrett a number of articles on the kind of positions. I'll just give this factoid for everybody. There was like, the top 10 jobs that are coming into place, and the top 10 that are going off. And I guarantee you that the counselors have no idea of that list, because I think even the top educators, if I might say, were really surprised at the list.
Yeah.
And so all I'm saying is, I think there's a total disconnect here. And one thing that I find interesting, because I've been in IT for a long time, is that some businesses now, I know this sounds like I'm making it up, but if you look it up, they want kids with backgrounds in gaming as part of requirements for different kinds of businesses, which I thought was really fascinating. So my point is, that if we're down in business, you know, that's a major red flag. So, sorry, I didn't mean to take too much time, but...
I would also say that, that counselors and our teachers do play a role in helping students pick their pathways, but students also listen to their peers. And if their peers are saying, this is kind of a boring pathway, that has a lot to do with it. So I think that finding engaging teachers and engaging curriculum will make a huge difference in this.
And I understand the peer thing totally, but one of the things, I think my point would be, there's a lot of things out there...
Yes, absolutely.
...that they're not aware of. And I would love to have this conversation offline. I just, I really...
Happy to.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. This will come back to us on the 21st of March for approval.
Thank you.
All right. Dr. Vosberg, you want to give an update on this urban learning and for Auburn High School?
Sure. So what you have is the contract that goes with the work plan. It's already been approved by the board. Takes some time, sometimes to work out the details of a contract, so ideally, we would have wanted that to go with the, voted on the night of the work plan, but we're unable to do that. So it's the work, it's the contract that goes with the work plan that you've already approved.
Sorry, my mic was off.
No problem. This was updated to include changes requested by board members, and so it hopefully is in the final format, but it will be up for the next board meeting for approval. And you have another opportunity to get back with us in the event that you have even more changes you want.
Questions or comments? Ms. McCullough.
I do have a question. So I know that we added this category, and I asked the question about whether compensation for administrators would be included, and you said it would not. My question is really more general to the district and to our extracurricular activities. So from a legal perspective, what sort of activities are we required to have an administrator in the building for when the school day, when the actual school hours are finished? And I ask that because we're told that, you know, we need extra principals, for example, at middle schools, because we have so many more extracurricular activities. Yet, there isn't always an administrator in the building with every extracurricular activity. Same at elementary schools. You know, if the, if the Girl Scouts come at 6:30 at night, we don't ask our principal to stay at 6:30 at night. So when do we have to have them, and...
Okay, so that's an easy answer for me to provide, and that is that there is no statutory requirement setting forth anything like that.
Okay, so then it goes to, what is our policy, our district policy?
What's your question again? Could you just, please?
Okay. My question is, what is the requirement for having an administrator in the building for extracurricular activities?
Depends on the activity. So typically, the administrator's there to provide a safe and controlled environment. So when we're hosting a football game, for example, with thousands of fans there, we would have four to five administrators at that event. If it's girls volleyball, and depending on what the game and how many fans are there, you might have one administrator. This depends on the expected size of the crowd.
But we are required to have an administrator in the building whenever there's an extracurricular activity?
An adult that's responsible to supervise the activity. Usually, that's going to be an administrator.
I was going to say, we don't always have an adult.
Another factor is, is the district responsible for the gate? So that would impact the decision. So for example, if there's a baseball game, and it's occurring, and typically in a baseball game, tonight there was a soccer game, it's very possible tonight, that with the weather, they may not have had somebody take tickets at the gate for a game. So at that point, there become less requirements for an administrator. It may be a designee. You see a lot of those stipends come through in your board report. So there's lots of different ways we have adults cover events. When it's a fundraising event like this, that would be, that would not be necessarily required in terms of the event. It would depend on what arrangements made, but there always is going to be some district designee or responsible adult that would be involved.
So, am I hearing that it's up to the principal of the building whether or not they believe an administrator or other adult needs to be, responsible adult needs to be present during an extracurricular activity?
So typically, at the start of the school year, you would calendar that out. The principal and the assistant principal would calendar it out. This, what you're talking about tonight is a fundraiser, which would be a little bit different. That would probably be up to the individual organization that's hosting the fundraiser. They would decide, in collaboration with the principal, how they would staff the event and make sure it's covered appropriately.
Well, and I'm really asking an overarching question. I mean, the fundraiser's one of them, but that's just one piece. I'm asking generically...
So like, at a middle school or a high school where there's a number of events each month, balance it out. Everybody gets their calendars coordinated, so we can spread out the supervision throughout the school year.
Is it just events? Or if you have clubs that are meeting, as long as their coach is there, that is, that counts as the adult?
Mostly events. Where you're going to invite the public into the school typically is where you're going to need some supervision.
Okay, that helps, too.
There's a different level. There's a different level of scrutiny anytime you're taking a gate. That's another, that's another level of expectation. Is it, you're exchanging cash, ZR would want to make sure that we have responsible individuals that are well-trained to handle cash handling protocols.
And if an administrator is not there, and somebody's having an activity, so let's go back to the little Girl Scout group at 6:30 at night, and there's an issue, then whoever the adult there is responsible for contacting back to the district or whatever, they would have that all in place ahead of time. Okay, thank you. Better understanding.
For category two, especially the fundraising opportunities, what is the genesis of that section, this part? Was it principals asked for it?
So the genesis of this was, our athletic director, Matt Parker, was concerned about, we wanted our, in some cases, our athletic teams, or any co-curricular activities, to have ways to raise funds in a way that goes beyond going door-to-door and selling candy bars and things like that, where they have to sell something. So we were, we have occasional opportunities where our student athletes could work at an event. For example, a lot of our events right now, if there's a home football game, the volleyball team may work the concession stands to raise money with the help of parents, as well as the student athletes. In this case, you may have an outside group that wants to run an event, and our student athletes would, or student activity participants would perhaps work at the event, run concessions at the event. And so that was part one of this, is we wanted to be able to come up with a category to make this happen. But two, we didn't want to cost the district money. Mr. Rowland said it very well on the floor. If you don't, if, we don't want to spend $3,000 of essentially waived facilities costs and create a disincentive in order to have our volleyball team make $4,000 in a fundraiser. We'd be better off just writing the check for 3,000. So what this policy amendment aims to do is to ensure that any real overhead costs are actually covered by whatever group would use the facility, and then the students could on top of that make, make the fundraising money. That was the big change from the original rollout. But I think the idea is, we, if this is directly benefiting a student group, as long as the facility is not damaged, we didn't want to have a full rental situation, because this allows students to use their, to use the facility as a way to raise money without costing the district, with the exception of real, you know, wear and tear on the facility, no damage occurs.
Just so I understand the difference between category one and two, let's use the arts organizations. Mr. Dixon brought up the example of going to see a production. So a production of Wicked would be a standard category one, I would assume, right? Because it's a standard group activity, right? So it'd be category one. What would make it category two in the arts concept? Let's say...
The exception would be, a roving theater group makes a deal with one of our theater productions to run a, to run a production of Wicked in our theater, and we would cover our costs.
Okay.
So there's no real costs incurred by the district. And then our theater program would run the concessions, run the, and would make money to pay for...
So category two would typically be an outside group? Is that kind of the point?
There's still an opportunity for just a straight rental situation, where there's not a partnership with a student group.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
And again, the change is, the original draft didn't do enough to make sure that the district's real costs were covered. And we wanted to make sure that, I will not be approving anything where the real costs are not covered.
Sure, sure, sure. No, I was just, as I read through it, I wanted to make sure I got the distinction. Thank you.
Any other comments?
So, just for clarification, so if, if this theater group comes in and doesn't have our students do anything, it's a different cost to them than if they allow our students to do something?
If it is a student fundraiser, where our students are building a partnership with this group and are making money, then we, through this policy, have the ability to evaluate whether we want to approve that. What we are not going to allow is this to be kind of like a loophole to get out of paying a rental fee, right? So this has got to be a real win-win for the district, where we get our costs covered and student groups make significant dollars on this for us to say yes. That's what we're trying to accomplish. In most cases, an outside group that wanted to use one of our facilities, we would just ask them to rent it and pay the rental fees. But this is a unique situation where a partnership forms between our PS group, and they say, hey, instead of selling candy bars, or T-shirts, or something, we want to partner with another group that does something we're into, gain a positive learning experience out of, for the student athletes, or the theater students, or whatever group it is. That's what we're trying to accomplish.
So, is it, oh, I'm sorry, not sure we're done.
And was, well, it just led to a different question. We used to get a report on facilities usage by outside groups, and we probably have, and I missed it maybe, but it gives us an idea of all the different organizations that are using them and the fees they're paying, just, just to kind of give all of us an update of where we're at with that. Sorry.
Yeah, we can, I can request that Mrs. Holy goes to our department and pulls that for the year to share in my next update. And in addition, we also have an ongoing $5,000 where I do have discretion to waive, and we keep very close track of that anytime I make that decision, so.
Lovely. Is that an answer? Because your microphone was not on.
Sorry. It is on the operations website.
Okay. So let me just posit something quickly, that if the pathways have sponsorships, is that a potential for, you know, arts, you know, athletics, academics, to have a partnership with somebody outside? If it was developmental for our students is kind of one of the possibilities? Is that, I understand that correctly? A pathway sponsorship, so we now have pathway sponsorships? If there was an educational outcome, and say, you know, the students were involved in, you know, frankly, some entrepreneurial activity, I mean, you might have an event that, okay, so, it's fairly broad-based. Okay, thanks.
Any more questions or comments can be directed to Mrs. Holy.
Proposals there on me, Mike. I...
No, it was good. Any other further comments or agenda recommendations for the board for tonight? Mr. Ross?
For tonight, but I just have a request. Every once in a while, questions come up about how we use purchasing consortiums to get around competitive bidding requirements, and I don't know that we've ever had a real discussion about what the parameters for that are. So I'm just asking that the administration maybe give us a succinct description at a COW meeting in the near future about what the parameters are and how we're using purchasing consortiums.
I think that goes to your department, correct?
Well, Ms. Holy and I will be working on that together, because part of it is a legal question, and that's really not my area of expertise, but we'll work on it together.
Any other items for tonight's agenda?
Just as an update, right now, unfortunately, it's 3327 with Geneva Hatties, so just, but yeah, it was, it was more so, so.
Time, or?
Not quite to half-time yet.
Okay. Any time, yeah. Yeah. And then I'll take a motion in a second for adjournment.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Segal, all those... Mr. Segal, all those in favor say aye. Both same sign, we are adjourned at 8:25.